Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September 12th, 2022 Legislative Session of the Salisbury City Council. I'd like to call the meeting into order. I'd like to have a brief announcement about safety. If there's an emergency during the meeting, we ask you to please leave the council chambers in an orderly fashion. As you exit, make a right-hand turn, go down to the end of the hall and down the stairs. If for some reason that exit is blocked, exit the chamber, make a left-hand turn, then a right-hand turn to the end of the hallway and down the stairs. Please do not use the elevator if there is an emergency. If you need assistance, please ask and it will be provided to you. Right now, please stand and join me in the place to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, it's my pleasure to introduce Reverend John Wright of Unitarian Universalist Fellowship to give our invocation. Reverend Wright, good evening.
Thank you, and what an honor it is to be here among you today. Please join me in a spirit of prayer. O Spirit of generations who gives us our heritage of freedom in this city of enormous talent, sacred vision of justice revealed imperfectly in human law, Divine Parent, that which holds all, Allah, Yahweh, God. As we gather this evening, I ask for blessings on this council, this wonderful city of ours and those who serve it. Holy One, help those gathered here remember whom they serve and that, no matter where we live, everyone, whatever sexual orientation, gender expression, faith or lack thereof, skin color, where they were born, or the size of their bank account are all neighbors, siblings. Infinite One, grant these servant leaders the wisdom, courage, and compassion to respect and protect the least of those among us, the children, the elderly, the poor, those who are hungry, those who have no homes, those who are ill in body, mind, or spirit, the strangers and immigrants in our midst, those who live on the margins, those who are alone, and those who are forgotten. Bless these good and faithful servants, O Source of all, and keep them safe and well. May they and we always be guided by the Spirit of community, by the Spirit of justice, and by the Spirit of love. May they be ever mindful that what they do matters, who they are matters. This we pray in the name of all that we hold sacred and holy, all that we hold good, right, just, and true. Blessed be, amen, amin, and may it ever be so.
Thank you, Reverend Wright. Great job, as always. We thank you. At this time, we have a proclamation, and City Administrator Julia Glanz will present it. Good evening.
Good evening, Council. I'd like to invite my friend Shonda up here, who is an advocate for the sickle cell community. So, the proclamation reads, "Whereas sickle cell disease refers to a group of inherited disorders in which a person's body produces abnormally shaped red blood cells that resemble a crescent or sickle and do not last as long as normal red blood cells, which cause severe pain, serious infection, and organ damage. And whereas this chronic condition can affect an organ including kidneys, lungs, and spleen. And research indicates that patients experiencing many severe complications, including stroke, infections, and pulmonary embolism, and have a shorter life expectancy than the general population. And whereas sickle cell disease is a genetic disorder affecting approximately 100,000 Americans, primarily African-American and Hispanic-Americans. And whereas our nation's medical professionals and scientists work tirelessly to find a cure while also striving to improve treatments for sickle cell disease to reduce the burden of this disease on our friends and family. And whereas throughout the month of September, we celebrate the progress made in treating individuals suffering from this deadly disease and stand together to improve the health of those living with it. And whereas the city of Salisbury calls on all citizens, community agencies, medical professionals, elected officials, schools, and businesses to increase their awareness of sickle cell disease and work to support those in the community battling it." And now therefore, I, Julia Glanz, on behalf of Mayor Jake Day, do hereby proclaim September 2022 as Sickle Cell Disease Awareness Month. So, congratulations. Jesse, you might come in.
I just want to thank you ever so much for the caregivers and the warriors that battle this disease every month, every day. And so, we want to continue to do our awareness, and we want to continue to use this as a platform for us to make changes. Thank you.
Shonda, I have some information for you with a lady who is trying to implement, and not only implement, but to help you with your journey for sickle cell.
Awesome. So, Friday, we're doing a blood drive at UMS, and then next Friday, we're doing a blood drive at Salisbury State, and then we're doing Third Friday at Down Way Downtown, we'll have our proclamation. And then we're also doing our first sickle cell walk at the Gordon Hayward Center on Saturday. And so, it's from, registration starts at 9:30, and then we are doing our walk starting at 11:00.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'll call for a motion in a second to adopt the legislative agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, this is Gregory. I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the legislative agenda as printed, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. The legislative agenda is adopted by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson. Good evening, Mrs. Nichols.
Good evening. On the consent agenda, we have August 1st, 2022 closed session minutes, August 8th, legislative session minutes, August 15th, work session minutes, and August 22nd legislative session minutes. And that's it.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the consent agenda as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. The consent agenda is approved by a motion of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve the award of bids.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Blake, who was the second, please? Ms. Jackson. Ms. Miller, good evening.
Good evening, everyone. I do want to note that one of the items that we wanted to bring to council for surplus this evening, the Salisbury Police Department duty weapon, we'd like to strike that from this evening.
Okay.
Okay. The first item is an award of bid. This is ITB number 23-109. It's the Salisbury Fire Department Station Number 16 HVAC replacement. The scope of work for this is replacing the condensing units, coils, controllers, thermostats, and temperature sensors at Fire Station 16. The work does include the disposal of the old equipment. The proposed vendor is Electrical Automation Systems. Under a current city contract, it's a citywide contract for HVAC upgrades, maintenance, and repair. That contract number is ITBA-20-108. That contract has already established hourly rates and equipment markup allowances, and it's currently valid through February 18th, 2023. We entered into that contract as a piggyback on a Wycomico County contract, Wycomico County HVAC service and repair contract. That was dated July 5th, 2018. So I just wanted to show you the progression of contracts here. Per City of Salisbury Charter, Section 16-3, item number nine, General Policy of Competitive Bidding Exceptions. Competitive bidding is exempt, or procurements are exempt from competitive bidding anytime there's a contract in which the city receives a contract price negotiated by the state, county, or other governmental entity pursuant to a valid contract. The total cost for the work is $131,120. The account noted in your packet will be fully funded pending approval of tonight's Ordinance 2736, which is the second reading.
Questions or comments?
None.
Okay.
Okay. The other items are surplus items, request for surplus declaration. So, from the Salisbury Police Department, from the property room, we have 15 pieces of jewelry, 29 bicycles, and then again, we're going to strike the duty weapon. The jewelry, we would look to dispose of that, those items via an online auction sale, a public sale. And then the bicycles would be a local donation to charitable organizations. The other surplus item this evening is the Department of Field Operations. It's the five new flyer mass transit buses. Here, we would look to sell them via an online public auction if saleable. If not, we would look to salvage them. And this is also pending approval of tonight's Resolution 3184, in which we would accept the buses.
Questions or comments? Okay, that's it?
Yes.
Just a question, Mrs. Nichols. Do we need to have to amend that to remove the weapon from the surplus?
Probably.
I think we should for, yeah.
Yeah.
So could I have a motion for an amendment?
Make a motion to amend to remove the duty weapon.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Boda?
Harmony.
And we'll give it harm, no, we'll have to pick somebody, so I'll pick Ms. Jackson. She's on my good ear. So first, we'll vote on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment as read, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. The amendment is passed by a vote of five to zero. Now we'll vote on the award of bids. All those in favor of the award of bids, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. The award of bids is passed by a vote of five to zero. Thank you, Mrs. Miller.
Thank you.
Now, entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 3184.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson, Ms. Glanz.
Resolution Number 3184, resolution of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, accepting five 40-foot Maryland Transit Administration buses. Whereas in support of the National Folk Festival in 2018, the Maryland Transit Administration agreed to give the City of Salisbury five 40-foot buses. And whereas these buses were to be used during the 2018 National Folk Festival in support of site safety. And whereas due to an oversight, the five buses were never officially accepted by the City of Salisbury as a donation. And that's it.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
I mean, just to note that in the packet, they have significant issues, and they need to be repaired, and I think also they are too big for our city streets, so.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Resolution 3184, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Resolution Number 3184 is approved by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 3185.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Ms. Blake, Ms. Glanz.
Resolution Number 3185, a resolution of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, adopting the Wycomico County Hazard Mitigation and Resilience Plan. Whereas the City of Salisbury Municipality in Wycomico County, Maryland recognizes the risks, natural hazards posed to people and property. And whereas an adopted 2022 Wycomico County Hazard Mitigation and Resilience Plan is required as a condition of future funding for hazard mitigation projects. And whereas the City of Salisbury participated jointly in the planning process with other local units of government within the county to prepare a 2022 Wycomico Hazard Mitigation and Resilience Plan.
Thank you, Ms. Glanz. Questions or comments? I must, I just have one comment. I finally finished reading the entire document, and it is very well done and very, very specific. And I thank the team that put in all the hard work to get it done. Any other comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Resolution Number 3185, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Resolution Number 3185 is approved by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 3186.
So moved.
Who?
Second.
Ms. Blake, Ms. Jackson. Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Ms. Glanz.
Resolution Number 3186, a resolution of the Council of the City of Salisbury to authorize the mayor to enter into, on behalf of the City of Salisbury, a deed for the abandonment of an unimproved paper road and a corresponding easement. Whereas SC 11-2 of the Charter of the City of Salisbury grants the City of Salisbury exclusive authority over all public ways located within the municipal boundaries of the city. And whereas the city is the owner of certain piece or parcel of land described as the relocated Johnson Road by deed from JWC Johnson Road LLC by deed dated April 15th, 2010, and recorded among the land records of Wycomico County, Maryland in Lieber MSB Number 3184, Folio 46. Said parcel of land being more particularly shown as the relocated Johnson Road on a platentitled subdivision of parcel two and dedication plat for GWC, JWC, excuse me, Johnson Road LLC made by Parker and Associates Incorporated dated January 3rd, 2008, and revised March 2nd, 2009, and recorded among the plat records of Wycomico County, Maryland in plat cabinet MSB Number 15, Folio 891. And whereas the city was granted certain permanent and perpetual utility easements by the deed of easement granted by JWC Johnson Road LLC dated March 15th, 2010, and recorded among the aforementioned land records in Lieber MSB Number 3184, Folio 54. And whereas land originally conveyed to the city to serve as relocated Johnson Road, as aforementioned, was never improved by construction of street improvements, curb, gutter, storm drainage, paving, or other improvements, and hence amounted only to a paper road. And whereas pursuant to the authority granted in the city, granted the city under SC 11-2 of the charter, the city deems it necessary and appropriate to abandon the unimproved roads identified above and terminate the corresponding easement. And whereas the city's abandonment of the roads identified above will not affect any public access to public roadways. Additionally, the road constitute a mere paper road as it was never constructed and operational. And whereas the grantee identified on the attached deed and termination of easement, Vantage Point Property Salt, Vantage Point Salisbury Partners I LLC desires that the attached deed be executed conveying the property identified above to Vantage Point Salisbury Partners I LLC. And whereas by this resolution, the city hereby authorizes the mayor's execution of the attached deed on behalf of the city.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance of Resolution Number 3186, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Resolution Number 3186 is approved by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 3187.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mrs. Gregory. Ms. Glanz.
Resolution Number 3187, a resolution of the Council of the City of Salisbury to authorize the mayor to enter into, on behalf of the City of Salisbury, a deed for the abandonment of an unimproved paper road. Whereas SC 11-2 of the Charter of the City of Salisbury grants the City of Salisbury exclusive authority over all public ways located within municipal boundaries of the city. And whereas the city is the owner of certain parcels of land, same being the streets or street beds in the development known as Summers Gate as created by the platentitled Summers Gate Final Subdivision Plat made by Parker and Associates revised January 15th, 2008, and recorded among the plat records of Wycomico County, Maryland in plat cabinet MSB Number 15, Folio 458-50 by deed from Vantage Point at Summers Gate LLC, a Maryland limited liability company dated February 8th, 2008, and recorded among the land records of Wycomico County in Lieber MSB Number 2895, Folio 563. And whereas a part of Summers Gate subdivision has been reconfigured to a number of lots originally plotted for the Summers Gate subdivision have been abrogated and resubdivided into one or more larger parcels of as-yet undeveloped land as more particularly shown on the platentitled resubdivision of lots 41 through 66, 75 through 95, and 98 through 116, parcel E, parcel F, Summers Gate Final Subdivision Plat made by Parker and Associates dated October 5th, 2020, revised October 20th, 2021, which plat has been recorded among the land records of Wycomico County, Maryland in plat cabinet JBM Number 17, Folio 55052. And whereas some of the land originally deeded to the city to serve as city streets in the Summers Gate subdivision as originally configured were never improved by the construction of streets, curb, and gutter, storm drainage, paving, or other improvements, and hence have amounted only to paper roads. And whereas pursuant to the authority granted, the city under SC 11-2 of the Charter, the city deems it necessary and appropriate to abandon the unimproved roads identified above. And whereas the city's abandonment of the roads identified above will not affect any public access to public roadways. Additionally, the road constitutes a mere paper road as it was never constructed or operational. And whereas the grantee identified on the attached deed, Vantage Point Salisbury Partners I LLC desires that the attached deed be executed conveying the property identified above to Vantage Point Salisbury Partner I LLC. And whereas by this resolution, the council hereby authorizes the mayor's execution of the attached deed on behalf of the city.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Resolution Number 3187, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Resolution Number 3187 is approved by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 3188.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Blake, Mr. Boda, Ms. Glanz.
Resolution Number 3188, a resolution of the Council of the City of Salisbury making a declaration of official intent regarding City of Salisbury's reasonable expectation to reimburse from proceeds of a future borrowing project expenditures made in connection with two separate projects generally identified as Town Square and Downtown Streetscaping. Whereas, City of Salisbury, a municipal corporation of the state of Maryland, is in the process of undertaking two separate projects identified as Town Square and Downtown Streetscaping. Whereas the city anticipates borrowing money for costs of the project, such borrowing to be evidenced by one or more series of general obligation bonds or other evidence of indebtedness to be issued by the city. And whereas the city reasonably expects to spend city funds on the costs of the project prior to the issuance of the bonds or any interim financing incurred by the city in anticipation of the bonds. And, one, to reimburse the city for the proceeds of the bond for all of the portion of such previously paid costs of the project, and/or, two, to use the proceeds of the bonds to refinance all or portion of the interim borrowing incurred by the city that is applied to reimburse the city for prior expenditures relating to the project. And whereas Section 1.150-2 of the U.S. Treasury Regulations provides that a local government funding original expenditures intended to be reimbursed from proceeds of obligations must be, must make a declaration of official intent in order to qualify such original expenditures for reimbursement from a reimbursement bond, all within the meaning of reimbursement regulation. And whereas the city is an issuer of purposes of the reimbursement regulations, and the council of the city wishes to adopt this resolution for the purpose of evidencing the clear and official intent of the city to reimburse from reimbursement bond proceeds, meaning the bonds or any interim financing incurred in anticipation of the bonds, original expenditures made in connection with the bonds, projects, excuse me.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
None.
Okay.
Sorry, none.
Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Resolution Number 3188, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Resolution Number 3188 is approved by a vote of five to zero. This evening, we have a public hearing relative to the Charter Amendment Resolution 2022-4 to amend the Charter of the City of Salisbury, Maryland by adding Article XXIIII to provide collective for collective bargaining. I'll now entertain a motion and a second to approve CAR 2022-4.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson. Before we ask Ms. Glanz to read, is there anyone here who will speak on this topic? No one, I don't see anyone on the screen either, so that's fine. Ms. Glanz, will you please read the CAR?
Sure. Charter Amendment Resolution Number 2022-4, a resolution to amend the Charter of the City of Salisbury, Maryland by adding Article XXIIII of the Charter to provide for collective bargaining. Whereas there exists a need for harmony and cooperation between a public employer and its employees. And whereas the City of Salisbury recognizes the benefit of allowing certain employees to organize and bargain collectively. And whereas the City of Salisbury believes it's in the best interest of the citizens of the city and its employees to amend the city charter to grant certain employees the right to organize and bargain collectively through representative employee organizations of their own choosing, and to submit to binding arbitration certain labor disputes that may arise during negotiations as to be subsequently defined and established by ordinance. And whereas the Labor Code, which shall be passed after this charter amendment takes effect, shall define and establish the scope and subjects of bargaining, including negotiable and non-negotiable items or both, the rights of the employer and the employee, the units appropriate and inappropriate for collective bargaining, grievances, unfair labor practices, permissible and impermissible union activities, and the scope and method of binding arbitration, and the disputes to be submitted to binding arbitration. And whereas the City of Salisbury recognizes the need to protect the public by assuring uninterrupted, effective, and orderly service, and consequently, the Labor Code shall prohibit strikes or work stoppages for all public employees.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open the public hearing and ask once again if anyone wishes to speak on this topic. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll call for a vote on Resolution Number All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Resolution Number 2022-4 is approved, excuse me, by a vote of five to zero. Thank you, Ms. Glanz. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2735 for the second reading. This time I'll entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2735 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Ms. Blake. Ms. Boucher, good evening.
Good evening, everyone. So before you have Ordinance Number 2735, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY 2023 General Fund Budget to appropriate funds to the Salisbury Fire Department's operating budget. This is before you for second reading, no changes or amendment since first reading.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Ordinance Number 2735 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Ordinance Number 2735 is approved by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2736 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda. Ms. Boucher.
Ordinance Number 2736, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury approving an amendment of the city's FY 2023 Fire Department's Budget and the General Capital Project Fund Budget to provide funds for the Fire Station 16 HVAC project. This is before you for second reading, no changes or amendment since first reading.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
It'll take longer to put that in, right?
Right.
That's fantastic.
Hearing none, I'll call a motion. All those in favor of Ordinance Number 2736 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Ordinance Number 2736 is approved by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2737 for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda. Ms. Jackson. Ms. Boucher.
Ordinance Number 2737, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury amending Section 17.212.030 of the Salisbury City Code, to add animal hospitals to the category of uses permitted in shopping centers. Whereas the ongoing application, administration, and enforcement of Title 17 zoning of the City of Salisbury Municipal Code demonstrates the need for its periodic review, evaluation, and amendment in order to keep the provisions of Title 17 current, comply with present community standards and values, and promote the public safety, health, and welfare of the citizens of the city. Whereas the mayor and council of the city are authorized by Maryland Code Annotated Local Government Article, Section 5202, to adopt such ordinance as not contrary to the Constitution of Maryland, public general law, or public local law, as the mayor and council deem necessary to assure the good government of the municipality, to preserve peace and order, to secure persons and property from damage and destruction, and to protect the health, comfort, and convenience of the citizens of the city. Whereas the mayor and council may amend Title 17 of the city code pursuant to the authority granted by Maryland Code Annotated Land Use Article, Section 4102, subject to the provisions set forth in Section 17.228.020. Whereas the uses permitted in shopping centers currently include a myriad of categories, including service establishments and medical offices. The inclusion of animal hospitals as defined in Section 17.04.120 would provide an additional but still substantially similar use in shopping centers. Whereas the mayor and council find the health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of the city will be furthered by amending Section 17.212.030 of the Salisbury City Code to permit animal hospitals and shopping centers. Whereas pursuant to Section 17.228.020 of the city code, any amendments to the city zoning code requires the recommendation of the Salisbury Planning and Zoning Commission prior to the passage of an ordinance amending Chapter 17.212. Whereas a public hearing on the proposed amendment was held by the Planning Commission in accordance with the provisions of Section 17.228.020 of the Salisbury City Code on July 21st of this year. Whereas at the conclusion of its July 21st meeting, the Planning Commission recommended by a vote of seven to zero that the amendments to Section 17.212.030 of the Salisbury City Code set forth herein be approved by the mayor and council. And whereas the mayor and council have determined that the amendments to Section 17.212.030 of the Salisbury City Code shall be adopted as set forth herein. So Section 1, Section 17.212.030 of the Salisbury City Code, which is entitled "Permitted Use," shall be amended as follows, and we are adding the language that is bulleted and underlined found on line number 56, so adding section N, Animal Hospital, except that the following shall be prohibited: 24-hour and/or overnight care boarding of animals and/or outside pens or runs.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Ordinance Number 2737 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Chair votes aye. Ordinance Number 2737 for the first reading is approved by a vote of five to zero. I want to entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2738 for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mrs. Gregory. Ms. Boucher.
Ordinance Number 2738, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury approving an amendment of the city's General Capital Project Fund Budget to provide funds for the Waterside Parking Lot Project. Whereas the city of Salisbury received a community parks and playground grant to construct a parking lot at Waterside Park and Playground. Whereas due to increases in material and labor costs, the project costs now exceed the grant award. Whereas the city has determined the energy performance consulting services are no longer needed by the city at this time, and the funds can be reallocated to a higher priority project. Whereas the reallocation of FY 18 pay-go necessary to execute the Waterside Parking Lot Project is $34,400 as provided herein and must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of forfeits of the council of the city of Salisbury. Now therefore be it enacted and ordained by the council of the city of Salisbury as follows: Section 1, Mayor Jacob R. Day is hereby authorized to award appropriation of the Waterside Parking Lot Project in the amount of $34,400. And be it further enacted and ordained by the council of the city of Salisbury as follows: Section 2, the city of Salisbury's General Capital Project Fund Budget B and hereby is amended as follows: Decrease revenue for energy performance consulting with account description pay-go, and that is account number 98018469313-48037, in the amount of $34,400. Increase revenue for the project description Waterside Parking Lot, account description pay-go, account number 9801846931348040, in the amount of $34,400. Decrease expenditure of the project description Energy Performance Consulting, account description consulting, account number 98118-513400-48037, in the amount of $34,400. And increase expenditure for the Waterside Parking Lot, that's the project description, the account description is construction, account number 98118-513026-48040, in the same amount of $34,400.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
Is this that energy consultant that?
Yes.
The one that Jim and I didn't like?
Yes.
Okay. I happily support this.
It's a long story. Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
No. Mayor.
I'll now call the motion. All those in favor of Ordinance Number 2738 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Ordinance Number 2738 for the first reading is approved by a vote of five to zero. I want to entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2739 for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Blake. Was it Ms. Jackson? Or was it Mrs. Gregory? Ms. Jackson. Yeah, I reversed it. She's.
I learned I'm not quick enough.
No. No problem. Ms. Jackson, second. Ms. Boucher.
Sure. Ordinance Number 2739, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury to accept a donation in the amount of $9,500 from the Salisbury Skate Park Committee, Inc., and to simultaneously approve a budget amendment to the grant fund budget to appropriate these funds for eligible expenses associated with the construction of Phase 2B of the Salisbury Skate Park. Whereas the city of Salisbury has a large number of youth and many adults that love to skateboard, and whereas the city wishes to provide an improved and expanded public skate park for its citizens that is free of charge so that they may continue to enjoy what is becoming an increasingly popular sport. And whereas expansion known as the Salisbury Skate Park Phase 2B will further build upon the commitment that our community has made to our local youth and citizenry at large by providing yet another amenity to serve the health, social, and recreational needs. And whereas in October of 2021, the city received a Community Parks and Playgrounds, CPNP, grant from the Maryland Department of Natural Resources for the Salisbury Skate Park Phase 2B in the amount of $162,801. And whereas the city allocated the grant to the cost of the Salisbury Skate Park Phase 2B, but a change order has exceeded the allowable budget for the project. And whereas the Salisbury Skate Park Committee, Inc., has offered to donate an additional $9,500 to expand the budget for Phase 2B of the skate park, thereby enabling Change Order Number 9, Undercontract RFP 03-14, to be executed. And whereas the appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this donation must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of forfeits of the council of the city of Salisbury. Now therefore be it enacted and ordained by the council of the city of Salisbury as follows: Section 1, Mayor Jacob R. Day on behalf of the city of Salisbury is hereby authorized to accept a donation in the amount of $9,500 from the Salisbury Skate Park Committee, Inc., which donation will be appropriated for expenditures related to Salisbury Skate Park Phase 2B. Section 2, the city of Salisbury's Grant Fund Budget B and hereby is amended as follows: A, increased skate park donations revenue account number 12800-456415-73039 by $9,500; and B, increased skate park construction expense account number 12800-513026-73039 by $9,500.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
This is great.
I just, I have a couple of comments. One, the Salisbury Skate Park Committee has always stepped up, and they've done more than their fair share, and it's thanks to them for their continued support. And second of all, just a comment, I drove by early evening, I think it was around 5:00, 5:30, and went by the skate park, and I think the youngest person there was probably 14, looks 13, 14. And I think the oldest person there was probably 45. And it was encouraging to see that the older guys were taking each of these kids under their arms, sort of, and was helping them and teaching them. So there's more than just skating that happens at that facility, so thank you. I'll now call the motion. All those in favor of Ordinance Number 2739 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Ordinance Number 2739 for the first reading is approved by a vote of five to zero. Thank you, Ms. Boucher.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. That concludes the items on the agenda, and the first thing we will do, because we have a closed session tonight, the first thing I'd like to do is ask, is there anyone that has public comments other than the, we know public comments? Okay. Then in that case, the Salisbury City Council will convene at 6:00 PM on September 12th, 2022, for their regularly scheduled legislative session. At approximately 7:05, upon adjournment of the legislative session, council will entertain a vote to convene closed session to consult with council staff on a legal matter regarding pending or potential litigation in accordance with the Annotated Code of Maryland, Section So I'll entertain a motion now.
Mr. President, did you want to do administration and council comments first?
I think we'll do them when we come back.
Okay.
If that's all right.
Yeah, we just wanted to introduce someone that was here.
Oh, yeah, then go ahead. Let's do the.
I would like to introduce somebody I think is quite special. I'm quite excited, finally. Salisbury University has a macro and social work track now, and macro is basically social work, policy and social work. And this year I've been very honored to actually have been assigned my own intern for this track, Monica Chase. Would you like to stand and just give your beautiful wave and smile to everybody? She is extremely smart, and I think no matter where she goes, she's going to make a tremendous amount of change. But she'll be working in and out, and everyone will be seeing her, and I'll be introducing her in future meetings and things. So that's very exciting.
Thank you. Mr. Boda?
Oh, I just wanted to say on September 27th, 2022, the city of Salisbury is having the Stam Slam at the skate park. Yes, it's the Stam Slam. It's on Facebook.
It is. It's official.
They're going to be recognizing Debbie Stam for her incredible contributions to our city.
She wanted us to get on the skate board.
I was going to say.
That too.
I mean, you can, I mean.
If you, yes, as long as we have the fire department ambulance there.
So that's something, look, on Facebook, that's going to be a great thing. I assume we're going to have a Debbie Stam Day and all that good stuff, and.
When is it?
Is that a paid holiday for city employees? Are we looking into that? So anyway, just thought I'd do that. September 27th.
5:00 PM.
5:00.
I think my glasses also.
5:00 PM.
5:00.
Yeah, I guess they're going to be doing groundbreaking for the Phase 3, so 5:00.
Yep. April.
I'm done today.
Okay. Michelle.
Be blessed, everyone.
There's going to be a bulk trash pickup, free bulk pickup for city residents coming up at the end of the month, so check again the Facebook page and get on there. I know I've got a few things that I need to clear out of the garage. Take advantage of it.
Clean up. Clean it up.
Yes.
But yeah, that was what I wanted to flag.
Thank you. Ms. Glantz.
Thank you for recognizing Stam Slam here. Two other quick things, tomorrow at the Ann Street Village, our tiny home village, supporting our friends who are currently experiencing homelessness, the company pallet will be on site erecting each of the units. So that should take a day or two or three, depending on just how fast the team works. So if you're in the neighborhood of Ann Street, swing by and, you know, check that out. Also, and we'll get this out to everybody if it hasn't already gone out, next Tuesday we have a neighborhood walk. It is in the Church Street neighborhood, and our goal is to educate the community on the Ann Street Village, talk about, you know, the changes that are coming to the neighborhood. I'm sure folks still have questions and aren't sure what's going on in that site, so we'll answer lots of questions. We'll have interpreters with us, as it is a large Haitian and Spanish-speaking neighborhood, so we'll be able to chat with everybody. And then we'll also be getting information out on some community days that we'll be doing some community builds, erecting a fence, painting the units, landscaping and things like that. But that is September 20th, which is Tuesday, from 5:00 to 7:00, and we'll meet right at Ann Street Village. And then finally, the new boosters, the bi-valent boosters have come to Wycomica County. I have my crayon Band-Aid to prove it. Arms feeling good, feeling good so far. The county is doing clinics Monday and Wednesdays. That information is on their website, but go check it out.
Thank you. I'll just add my normal second. Blood, if you can do it, please give blood. We're still low, and that's about it for me tonight, so thank you, everyone, for coming, and I'll now entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Jackson, and second by Mrs. Gregory. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We're in closed session now. Thank you.
Are you ready?
Yeah.
Okay, we're ready now. All right. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. This is, we just come out of a closed session.
All right. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. This is, we've just come out of a closed session to consult with council to obtain legal advice on a legal matter, and if there's no other business, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.